We call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge. We'll call these and you're going to go from Brown, Councilwoman Donovan, Allison, Allison Schwab.
Resub.
Allison Mary. All right, we do have two people signed up for public comment this evening. When you come forward, when I call your name, please state your name and address at the podium, and you will have five minutes to speak. First is Rich Engold.
Evening, Mayor and Councilman, let's see what's staff. I'm reaching Row fourteen thirty-four Northeast Street, Purple Creek, Colorado. I'm here on behalf of the Gold Camp Association and the Victor Purple Creeks American Legion Post one seventy-one. I would like to thank you all for your support, participation, and during Independence Day, we had a great Independence Day. We had a growing crowd at the people for the evening. Wonderful fireworks display. From all my reports, our vendors all sold out. We had hundreds of people that signed up to honor people and rang the bell for freedom for their loved ones. And that was all went very well. And I would like to point out that Tracy went over and above to range for tents and we do all kinds of errands to make that day successful. And I appreciate the first responders who participated in coming out with their vehicles and staff, and that seemed to be a big hit with a lot of our crowds. So, once again, thank you very much. And so it's a great day, and you all were huge supporters of a very patriotic day here in Purple Creek. Thank you.
All right, next on Carol Stotts.
Good evening, Mayor Durham, City Council. My name is Carol Stotts, three five two Last Lake Drive, Dubai. I just wanted to remind City Council and the community that Tyler County Fair kicks off next Saturday, and it will go through the following weekend. It would be great to see some faces out there, as always, you can see what they really know and acknowledge that we have to share with you. I know that the county is doing a dedication, and the county has put some grants and some some money getting put into that fair event. So, just a reminder again, it kicks off next Saturday. It goes through the following. Thank you.
Okay, approval of voting minutes from the July third, two thousand twenty-four Purple Creek City Council regular meeting. Has the council had an opportunity to review the minutes?
No.
Any revisions or changes? Uh, a second. Go please. Allison Schwab.
Yep.
Allison Mary.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'm moving on to reports. Um, City Administrator report. Thanks.
Two hours again there. Just kidding. A long military reserve firefighter, five years part-time. He was a full-time firefighter with us, but part-time. He is five years. And Ryan Smith firefighter, five years full-time. Thanks. Awesome. Thank you.
Right, Finance Director, Monique Edwards.
Good evening, Mayor Durham and Councilmembers. I want to report on the device counts for the third quarter. They were up to three hundred, uh, three thou- three thousand fifty-one. That's up fifteen devices over the last quarter. Um, and if we compare that to the third quarter of the three quarter device count, um, the city is still down five hundred and thirty-four machines or fourteen point numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to O's proclamations and presentations. Uh, this first proclamation denouncing violence. I reached out to Frank a couple days ago and requested that we add this proclamation into the savings agenda in light of the events that happened in Butler, Pennsylvania this past Saturday. Uh, before I read this proclamation, I would like to say that our hearts are with the victims of the shooting, David Dutch and James Copenhever, and may they heal fully. And secondly, our hearts especially go out to the family, friends, and loved ones of Corey Conventori. Uh, not only was he a hero in life as a dedicated firefighter, but he was a hero in his death. Showing his wife and daughter from the bullets that ultimately took his life. And so at this time, I would like to read this proclamation. Whereas the city of Purple Creek honors and upholds the First Amendment of the Constitution of the United States, giving the people of the United States of America the right to peacefully assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. And whereas the city of Purple Creek strongly condemns the lawless actions of violence against our government, elected officials, government staff, and our law enforcement. And whereas the city of Purple Creek calls for an end to all politically motivated violence. And whereas the United States of America shall continue to serve as a strong model of democracy around the world. Whereas the city of Purple Creek is committed to defending democratic institutions, the integrity of our elections, and the security of people and facilities that carry out the democratic process. And whereas the city of Purple Creek is committed to ending the spread of hate, bigotry, and harassment based on political affiliation or any other protected characteristic as defined by law. And whereas the city of Purple Creek wishes to affirm its commitment to the well-being and safety of all of its community members and to ensure that they will be protected and their rights respected. And whereas each of our elected leaders has the ability and obligation to promote inclusiveness, celebrate diversity, work to ensure equitable opportunities in all major facets of society, prevent the spread of misinformation and disinformation, and reject hate and bias in all forms, and should set a positive example for their constituents in this regard. And whereas the July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four assassination attempt in Butler, Pennsylvania does not reflect the values of the city of Purple Creek. And whereas the city of Purple Creek supports the peaceful exercise of free speech, free assembly, and freedom to worship safely for all people. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Purple Creek affirms this ongoing commitment to cult- cultivating a safe and just society and culture, including within the city of Purple Creek operations and institutions that mirrors the values of our community, works to ensure equitable opportunities in all major facets of society, and celebrates both our individuality and commonality, denounces the July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four violence that took place in Butler, Pennsylvania, denounces all hateful speech and bias-motivated violent actions in our community, and urges residents to join us by adopting these values in their own lives, calling attention to these harms and denouncing hate and extremism to keep, help keep us all safe, proclaimed the seventeenth day of July, twenty twenty-four. Um, I would like to give a special thank you to City Court Melissa Gish, who, um, played a significant role in drafting this proclamation and a very, we discussed it on Sunday, and she emailed me Monday morning at seven thirty a.m. So, thank you so much for that. We appreciate you always. So. Okay, moving on. Um, presenting firefighters, Chief Joe O'Connor.
Good evening, Mayor Joe O'Connor, our chief. Tonight, we're going to present two new firefighters. They have been with us for just about a year. And as they come off their probationary period, it has been traditionally we give them, uh, how much the connections the same format as all the other career firefighters. So we're going to celebrate that tonight. We're actually going to ask the mayor to, um, present their oath of office, and with that, then we'll ask the families to briefly come up and pin them with their badges. Thank you.
So should I come down?
Go ahead. Don't come so early. You don't give out to anything. However, we'll just take the words. It was a sentiment that they used. Um, yeah, you're one of those.
So they say, all right, if you could please raise your right hand. I, and state your names.
I am Alhaz Alzoubi.
Do hereby declare.
I do declare. Do hereby declare.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
Constitution of the State of Colorado. You guys can say it together.
That's totally fine. Um, the laws and ordinances of the city of Purple Creek.
Laws and ordinances of the city of Purple Creek.
And the policies and guidelines of the Purple Creek Fire Department.
Policies and guidelines.
My fundamental duty is to serve the people in the community. And those personnel assigned to me. I swear to protect and safeguard life, health, and property.
Oh, my God.
I swear to protect and safeguard life, health, and property.
Swear to protect life. Yeah.
Against fire and other perils.
Against fire and other perils.
I will never allow my personal feelings. Nor danger to myself. Detour me from my responsibilities as a fire officer. I recognize the badge of my office.
Office.
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
And I accept that I shall remain true. To the ethics of the fire service. As a member of the Purple Creek Fire Department. I accept the self-imposed and self-regulated obligation.
I accept self-regulation, self-regulation.
Obligation.
Obligation.
As my responsibility and make these promises.
As my responsibility and make these promises.
Solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
Solemnly.
Excellent work. Thank you both so much, and congratulations.
So I really ask, uh, first one, I want to work with Joe O'Connor and who can dispatch. Sorry, trying to turn my blood.
Easy, bro.
I don't want to get nervous. Now, we've never, uh, for you. Are you ready? It's time. It's time. Perfect. Um, this is the best name ever. Allison Alzoubi. Still let me do that. Please spell it the same way every time.
My name is Mothart. Moving on, um, legislative updates, Saul Allen.
Oh, we'll watch you passing. We know. Hello, everyone. What's happening? Sadly, legislatively is on for the city of Purple Creek. Uh, excuse everybody. It's a good summer. Um, really, I just came here to do an honorable thing, uh, answering questions, whatever, and give you a very preliminary deal of the election. So, um, I think I might just start with the wrap-up. If you sure all had. Um, it was an active year for us. There's still a lot of things that affect us, whether it be passport or not. Um, so a lot of what we do legislatively is reaction. Um, there was one bill that we had to oppose unfortunately that had to do with excess labor, uh, winter revenue. We reposed that, and it did ultimately fail in committee. Uh, we were watching the first, and there was a lot of way to do this. So we had to be really certain choosing which one we tracked most. Um, and I think for our purposes, the parking bill was probably the most impactful. Uh, we did see this all happen longer than that, um, but we watched it very close to make sure that it didn't. For the cities, it's probably the same market range. Um, you don't think it did. Uh, it was perhaps it was signed into law on May tenth. Um, but the bill that we did oppose, um, referred to a house measure, it's House Bill fourteen thirty-six, that would allow a state to keep any excess sports betting revenue of that to go back to old sports betting entities, but we're now going to the state one, which is fine. That's where all the money went in the first place. Uh, but now it's back to twenty-nine million dollars. If there's excess, it will go to the state one if the voters decide to approve it. So, um, we wanted to see more equity in that because we're going to be creating communities building sports betting into our, but not TD. Um, no, that revenue would exist now. So, um, happy to answer any questions on that side. So if you know the access, so access will go back to the state one. So this is where I'm sorry, I'm a third, but getting ready to possibly come back to the cities. Was so, and where it would go back to the operators, or at least that's my understanding, uh, those ones who actually run that, uh, those programs. Um, I can't remember if it was the platforms themselves, uh, but it wasn't to us, which we are actively trying to address for anything.
So what's a, no violation, correct?
It was a violation. Yes. So I had to go two-thirds of the majority from each chamber. It was the Speaker's bill, and Sarah Dillon Roberts' bill. So, uh, those things were pretty juiced from the very beginning. Uh, I don't think we could have stopped it, even if we have all three cities on the books. So, um, so that's kind of the legislative wrap-up of the fires. These were last Tuesday. Actually, I can't go and date straight, but, um, or two Tuesdays going against the third. So it was two or three. So it's going too fast. Um, the state is better than the other states. We were expecting it to happen somewhat organically, and it has. Um, the really hyper-progressive legislators in the House were ousted. Um, they were making a lot of excess work just, just for the usual. For, uh, the speakers spent most of her time this year trying to work on her chamber and, uh, instead of working on policy. And that is disruptive and not productive for anyone. Doesn't matter what part of your, so this year, there was a group called One Main Street Colorado. They targeted eleven seats, um, to moderate them, and they won ten of them. So that is a incredibly successful campaign. I mean, what they did was truly inspirational. It makes me think that Colorado isn't just stuck in this one trajectory. So, um, they did an incredible job. So we, we are ready to moderate, which means that, um, we won't see as much hyper-progressive legislation. We'll still see a lot. So it'll be fun, but it won't have that same, um, sort of toxicity at, uh, because it was bad. This year was really bad. I, I, I've never seen it. So, and this was my twentieth, nineteenth seat. Um, so with that, um, the top of the ticket, as everybody knows, the proclamation was beautifully done, but well, it's really amazing. Uh, we hear that, uh, in the Democrats, uh, really, particularly are not sure with what's happening. Um, I, I just hear a lot of congressional and seven members are very saying serious concerns about the, the direction that the national Democrats are taking, and the Republicans, I think those few I knew, um, a little bit, and that they now are. They've held the war still to learn. So we'll see what happens to learn. I think we're looking forward to it, but, um, that will remove L effect, uh, ticket. It's just, it's how it works. So we'll see, but, uh, as we get closer, it's, it's going to be a pretty wild, right? But all right, yes. Um, so I think the last thing, um, I would have to say is the Democrats in the Senate, or the Senate's way from a super majority, that means the, the House of Assembly has a super majority. They, the four chambers have a super majority. They're Democrats, and the governor is also a Democrat. They are allowed to do things permanently on a parliamentary hold and on a process level, um, with rules and other products together. Um, they can control pretty much anything they want, um, depending on how they do it. So, uh, a lot of people are, are mature. The super majority is the best. Um, so hopefully we can maintain some evidence. Last thing I must say is, um, I have a very working member in the Senate ready to help us. He is looking at the revenue that we are getting from the state and, uh, certain programs. So we are currently evaluating that, trying to figure out what that's going to look like, but, um, we do believe, uh, the Senator and myself, that the game is movies on that, getting, uh, enough revenue for, uh, the contribution that they are providing to the state. So, um, I am hopeful that we, uh, use levels being generated currently, um, and, uh, give that to six, because we're here, we're going.
Three cities, two counties.
Three cities, two counties, say it. Right. Yeah. So it would go to, um, Tyler, give them such a, uh, I thought, maybe, and they will be equal shares. So it would not be based on a revenue barrier like this right now, which is a big, um, so that it would be equitable across, um, all, all that's here. Um, we'll keep you updated on that, but I, I do believe we are positioned to do as well as we can be right now, um, to improve for them. So happy to answer any questions. Uh, we are just a lot of actually, um, but it's going to be interesting to rest.
So, when is the budget starts?
Uh, it's seven, uh, but really, uh, it's, it's the part where all the presentations are done, um, all the requests for funding are done, and the, uh, the government's project. And so that's really where it starts, is when the governor presents his budget, um, which is November, um, but that which will be pretty well ready to go or die. So we'll, we'll see what that looks like. We can have a turnover much as I heard, the new, the Senate President will be leading us. So having a new Senate President, um, and it's, it's going to look a little different. And I think financially, because of our data constraints, which I won't go into now, is, is bringing a lot of folks, a lot of good folks this time become, died this year because, um, the chairs of corporations didn't want to bump up against that table. So it's complicated when you come in, when you go to town, say, I got to go to town. It's in the constitution. You have to balance the budget every year. So it's, uh, it's a new state, but we're going to have to work on table when it comes to the revenue. Um, I would like to see coming to the three cities and two counties.
Well, thank you for your advocacy.
I have been, uh, well, I've used for the city of Purple. So, um, I have sent a hundred and seventeen invoices just for my business. So that's ten years. Um, but I realized it was actually four years before I started doing footwork, not actually firm. So I've been with, uh, for about thirteen, maybe even fifteen years. Yeah, it's been, it's been fundamentally productive to see it from where we came and at the ground level and what we do. Um, our profile is completely different. We are well, we're under threat of attack every single year. Um, it is really truly galvanized itself into something, um, formidable. So I give it to my, uh, council members, previous council members, but, uh, the first step to understand the importance of having a government or just a state, that's the first step. It's a hard one, but you've stuck with it, and because of it, um, nobody's going to mess with Purple Creek, at least on, so we appreciate you being in Denver. Keep an eye on it.
Those one hundred and seventeen invoices are well worth paying.
I remember seeing about cutting the budget.
I appreciate you. Thanks for saying that. So thank you.
Okay, next we have the Finance Department's auditors, Monique.
Mayor, General, and Councilmembers, I'd like to introduce Max Haberbaum and Russell White. They're auditors from Ribbon Brown. And they're here to present the outcome of the twenty twenty-three financial, annual financial report. Um, they have to submit to them.
We do also have a part of our company.
That'd be good. Little Jared Small here.
It's certainly, it's one of those council reasons. Here's my episode.
Is this the same one?
Yep.
Monique.
Evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, I was right. Uh, still put around. You are on your shoulders. So Mike's have a current manager on the job, and I want to thank you for having me on again this year. The audit process started back in, uh, December of the twenty-three. We're out here the second week of, uh, January of twenty-four, uh, first to man on field work, and we wrapped up field work in, uh, May, uh, April of, uh, twenty-four. We're out here checking the tires and making sure Paul is in, crossing the team, the got the eyes, and work was in the may. And, uh, we completed our audit in, uh, in May, and we're here to present, uh, the audit. Um, the audit went very well this year, as it has in the, in the previous years. I'm going to turn over to Max. He's going to go over some detail on the actual audit report, and then I'll kind of follow up briefly on our report to governments. Okay, thanks.
In the interest of time, um, that first of all, thank you all for having us. Um, we're always happy to get here. In the interest of time, uh, statements, high-level of the financial statements, and actually they're going to happen during the year. Um, in our viewpoint, still, you have Russell's and nice, myself's contact information. So if you ever have questions, if you're going through any of the documents, you know, in depth, please feel free to reach out to us. We do work for the City Council. That's what we're here for. We're here to audit management and to report to the City Council, um, what happened during the twenty twenty-three this, this year. Um, I would like to draw your attention to, uh, page one of the report. It's the one that's got our, um, letterhead on, on the top, and that's our audit of the paper. Basically, what this, uh, couple page document says is that we, uh, have audited the city of Purple Creek, and that based on that, we issued an unmodified opinion. Now, unmodified opinion may sound really, really. Now, unmodified opinion may sound really, really, but why it needs A plus data auditorium. And so it means it's the best you can do, and if you've got, you know, a financial team that is doing exactly what they should be doing. And are doing everything in accordance with generally accepted, generally accepted accounting principles, which is why you ask. Um as far as that goes, it also means that um that we also, the information that you can see every single time, you know. Monet and previously Paul, when they came up here, they're reporting to you. Because we knew financial issues, that means that throughout the year, they may give you good information. Um so it's not some, there's no huge changes, no huge reconciliations, no massive, you know. Tidal waves of uh different information that you're receiving here and you'd be receiving on a regular basis from there. Um just to talk a little bit briefly about the financial position of the city, um. Really good year overall for the city. Um positive cash flow in every single one of the funds, the general fund, the historic preservation networks for fun. Um so it's really kind of uh looking up. I know that, you know, you're talking about how gambling revenues are down. But the good news is that that's being balanced with good uh fiscal responsibility and management for the expenditure side. So I mean, so long as you're living with bigger means, you know, you're still saving. Saving up for those bigger projects down the road, making sure you're ready to go for those. Um. Another quick thing I do wanna highlight is that there was a significant decrease. Or I guess there's this kind of a increase in the liability related to F D K, which is your pension plan. Um that is a an estimate every single year I come up and say, it looks bad. However, it is just a projection of what hypothetically F D K is gonna have to pay out in the future. For the specifically the firefighters and uh all of the participants in the plan. That were a part of Purple Creek during their time serving in the with the city. It's a hypothetical projection that's gonna be paid out over thirty, forty, fifteen years. And it's a number that represents that. It's not an actual number that anybody's gonna have to pay out right now. So um again, that change may look a little bit negative, but again, it is a projection and not something to be concerned about in the future. So um is there any questions anybody else has uh specifically about the uh financial position or anything about accounting perspective? Um I would like to say that I have been working with Paul for a very, very long time and I know that, you know, the people who have, you know. Been with him and, you know, have worked, even for a short time, knowing that he's probably um the best, you know, finance directors I've seen in my years of auditing. And uh I mean, I wish you were here today and I wish you could hear it, but I just want to say that it was uh it was a lot of pleasure working with him. And we're really excited to be here today. Uh we got a chance to obviously see that transitionary period when we were out here during the audit. It's great that they can both work together and talk and teach each other books. Um but we're we're very excited about the future of uh the Purple Creek place.
So just gonna, was it you that I talked on the phone?
Yes.
So and um and I'll just say what I said at that point, I don't have any questions because you had stated the unmodified opinion. And I'm also um I'm a new guy up here. Um but that being said, I I definitely trust, you know, what your what your findings were. So does anybody else have any other questions? Okay, awesome. Thank you.
All right, thanks for finding us, thanks. And uh now you'll be in a short room and uh maybe I'll record the governance. So in this uh packet right here, it's our important government, it's simple. This is our required audit communication. So basically make a nice shirt and suite. I mean, I understand we have no reported conditions, no significant deficiencies, no deficiencies in control. We only had one journal entry, but that's one that we assisted in because of this crazy GASB, federal tax standards, journal entry related to leases. So basically, my mind, zero journal entries. You don't hear that at other counties or cities. So zero journal entries, zero adjustments. So like Max said, the information we're getting on a monthly basis is accurate. There's no wild journal entries at the end, uh at the end of the year, that basically Paul or Nate would make. So it's all consistent. That's fantastic. Um uh so zero journal entries, so kind of, that's like, that's the goal of the best you can get, but kind of recap real quick. Nothing in here. There's a red or yellow line. It's all green, basically a clean opinion, it's unmodified. Zero journal entries and uh no noted issues. That wraps up our presentation. Again, thank you for your time. We appreciate uh you finding yours and that we look forward to that. That was up here in the future. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, agenda item A. Consider approval to purchase STEM site cloud software for cemetery space one and data migration. All right.
Well, again, um yes, so I think you all are pretty um pretty rational with this. Um but essentially, um the historic preservation department um would like to use H P funds to purchase um cemetery management software. Um STEM sites. I did want to just say very briefly that um. This software um is really unique. Um it's a little bit more expensive than the other ones I presented Frank with. Um but the management of of the cemetery that this will allow us to have is incredible. Um so unlike most cemetery softwares that store data on mapping, G I S mapping. Um this is integrated, so it's got two separate softwares, one that stores the data and then the actual mapping. Um so it will allow us to um manage our eighteen thousand plots that we discussed earlier um much more easy. Um this is the first of two phases. Um next year, we would, um after we do the mapping um and the the uh G P R scanning. And we would do a second, a second migration to get all that data in here. Um but uh on the um optional data migration um on the back page, um that will get all of our paper records. And all of our golf bill records in the software, so I can start identifying the issues and resolving them um from day one. So yeah, if you consider free, that would be great.
I think this is a better well spent. I think this is a good good deal. Because that cemetery is a mess.
And I was gonna say, right, if you don't mind, just um just a short recap for everyone in the room on the call with the purpose of the the concern of the G I S mapping and what that will.
Okay, so our cemetery is what I like to call a cowboy cemetery. Um it was um created in um the eighteen nineties. I mean, it was mostly unregulated for most of that time. Um we acquired in the late nineteen nineties, so much so, I can hear that nobody was managing it. Um this means that we have lots of unmarked burials, as well as burials that just have um the markings have degraded over time. Um it also means that um even though it's plotted, it probably um isn't actually thought of that way on the ground. So um we are working on um not only getting software so that we can manage all that information better. And we have eighteen thousand plots and forty two acres. It's a very large cemetery. Um and we um have received quotes for um G I S mapping and G P R scanning, which will scan around. Um to see what's there, um the G I S mapping, we'll put it all into um essentially a data base that we've been managed. Uh and look at these here. Um part of this software and the reason we chose it is it will also give us a public interface. Um so not in this step, but in the next step, um we'll be able to have families up the royals. Um so you have someone that passes away and we want to put up their artwork on our website for everybody to see. Um it also has the ability to create tours, um walking tours. So you can go to the cemetery, you can scan our website, and you can pull up a whole tour. Um as well as be able to locate family members. Um we have a lot of people calling asking for me to locate them. Um this will manage all of that so that you can do it from home. So overall, pretty uh moving moving forward, pretty good um uh steps for us with the cemetery. This is just the first one.
Right, is there a monthly or annual subscription to this?
Yes, yes. Um so that um that price is including the first year of of the subscription. Um after that, it'll be thirty five hundred a year. Um there is additional fees if we do phase two, but we can talk about that when we do it. Um because that'll be a lot of the public interface. If I remember correctly, if we do all of these steps, um this phase and the next phase. It's about five thousand dollars a year in fees. Um currently, um H P pays twenty five hundred for half of Gov Bill. As you know from our complaints, Gov Bill doesn't work. This will work. And it will give the public, um I think it honestly sets us up to pivot from just management to actual like. Working um cemetery and allow historic preservation to actually happen. Because we have so many historic figures that we can't let the public have access to. Um it'll allow us to connect to our museums, so both of our museums have references to um these historic figures that are in the cemetery site. We can have this available as well for them um to scan and say, now go out to the cemetery and look at their grave. So I think overall, it will not only help us manage long term um sales and um. Actual land management, but it'll also set us up to use it in a really interesting way that helps our two O S M in history.
Very broad capability.
Will we not be paying the twenty five hundred for the other then? And so we will be an additional thousand as of right now, or twenty five hundred additional next year question?
Correct.
Okay, and then you said our two museums and others, two that we own, but what about the two that we don't? Or is that something we could integrate?
That too. Yes, so district museum, I'm actually been working with Jeannie a lot on um. We've been locating um, so we had a old plot. Um it was plotted in eighteen ninety-six. So we're actually looking at mortuary books as well as that old plot and comparing to the physical headstones, which this will help me too, because it will locate all my headstones. Um and actually identifying some of these people and putting it in the software. So we have this whole history of Purple Creek available.
This is probably the next stage where there'll be an opportunity to value so on and to actually see what's in it, see what's. Do the mapping for G I S mapping, and then when they do the ground penetrating radar, they'll actually, if they find a burial, it'll tell us exactly that plot. So we might not know who's buried there. That's one of our problems right now in selling lots. So maybe it's a cemetery we're not selling because we don't know if somebody's buried there or not. So it's, that's why we've been talking about this since Mariah came on, is to start all of this and let's get it straightened out. So we were also trying to come up, and you'll see it next year, is we'll come up with markers. We're still trying to decide the best markers to mark an unmarked grave, so that we'll know someone is buried there. And people will know, so whether it's metal or whether it's stone, or we're still debating that, but that'll be a council decision down the road. How we mark these unmarked graves. So and maybe with the help of the museum, they won't be unmarked. Maybe we'll be able to say, this is where somebody is buried that we know now, so.
Yeah, we'll be able to identify some of those with the ground penetrating radar, so.
Just so the community knows, we're really using historic preservation funds that we get through the mean to do this. Because the cemetery is part of a store preservation, so we can use these funds for that.
Well, we appreciate the district museum's support and collaboration on this.
Oh, the rest of us are just invaluable.
Yes.
And I'm excited to find out about Gathersfield and how many, how many bodies were out there, it's for the record. You know, three thousand souls are on the windows cemetery. I'm excited to get an actual number.
Absolutely. Any further questions or discussions?
Is this, says total nineteen thousand, is that just a purchase and then it'll be like the thirty five hundred condition?
Twenty um both of the sheets of the phase one plus the um optional software. Um that's twenty two thousand this year. Um next year, um we just had a better discussion for this. Next year, it will be um. Of the cost of the ground penetrating radar, um the mapping. Um and um the second uh phase of this um is about twenty, twenty thousand again. But again, that would set us up with the walk to site with the tours, um with all the public facing um site as well. So overall, it'll end up being about forty two thousand to get us set up in the software and then five thousand a year.
The actual uh G P S and ground penetrating radar is about a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. This is the best quote she's got from one company that does both. They first come in and do the G I S mapping and then do the ground penetrating radar. They'll pay everything for us. So again, I think it's money well spent for the cemetery. We have to know. A lot of those markers that were put out there will probably would, and of course, they're there now more, so we have no idea. Where we're moving to, so we're gonna find out.
Yes, you can do the discussion. All right, can I get motion, please?
Um with motion that we approve the twenty two thousand dollars of historic preservation coming forward purchase of. So some cemetery and one of those software.
Right.
Go please.
Ms Law?
Yes.
Mayor Cosette Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Mary?
Yes, yes. Um agenda item B, consider approval of the resolution, resolution twenty twenty four dash fifteen. Awarding grants from historic preservation grant funds to named residents of the city of Purple Creek. All right.
Yay. Um okay, so I I give a presentation for this one. Um we'll just go through quickly each award. Um there are eight applications. Um the historic preservation commission did approve you all eight. Um and we're recommending six awards. Um the first one you'll recognize is from Jill Montgomery at one seventeen Prospect Street. Um she did apply in the first round for funds as well, um when she went to go do uh the work. Um. Oh, oh, yeah, I can do that, too. So here we are. Um so she applied and was awarded funds for um the repair of the foundation of the home. When we went to go do the work, they found out the porch foundation was also failing. And so she came back to request more funds to fix it all at once. Um she also requested funds for gutters. Um the commission has kind of taken the priority of foundation roof gutters. And that's because foundation and roof are most important to overall preservation, and then gutters kind of protect that work by shedding water away. So um she was, unfortunately, in the ten thousand nine hundred and fifty request, would put her over that lifetime max of the twenty five K. Um so they have recommended the award of nine thousand three hundred and twenty-five, which will put her at the twenty five K max. Any questions on that one?
I think you wanted to say I have a question about the twenty five K max, but.
Yes, don't we all? I want to send pictures of it. Um the other thing I'll mention is that we did, because um that additional porch was added. Um the recommendation is based on the historic foundation. The historic foundation is the one that's failing, not that new foundation. Um and then we also uh agreed to award a portion of the gutters uh again, that are protecting that historic building, not on the new, our new portion of it. Um second, we have one nineteen Bison Street. Uh Barb and Eric, a little bit Barb and Phil. Um they have done an incredible job with the preservation of this house. Um they have applied for funds before, um but this house is actually one of the only homes in Purple Creek that remains one hundred percent historic. They have not changed anything on this home. Um so we felt that the request for um gutters to. Help preserve it was very reasonable, especially at um nineteen hundred dollars. So um we did apply the ten percent match or ten percent match on this, so the suggested award is one thousand seven hundred and seventy-three. And that's just pretty standard um in H P right now is the ten percent match. Um here's some pictures of it again, one in the winter. Um. Um twenty-one placer street, um Gary McDonald. Um he has requested funds to repair his roof. Um the low number there is for asphalt shingles, the high number there is. Um, the row number there is for asphalt shingles. The high number there is for a metal roof. Um, HP decided that they would prefer um the asphalt shingles in a muted color over a metal roof. Um, that would not really be uh just worth the effort. Um, the suggested one on that um was twelve thousand eighty two fifty. Um, again, with a ten percent match from um the owner. Any questions on that one? Um, and then here's just some historic photos. Um, I did speak to the applicant. There was some concern about um that. Front porch being enclosed. He does have um some intent to restore it, um to. Yeah, so it looks a little more historic as well, so. Um, two oh eight North Fourth Street, um Chris Haslip. Um, he has requested funds um to repair some of the siding as well as paint. Um, this home recently came into his possession. Um, so the, you know, the, the, um. He's done some work on the inside and then was requesting money for the exterior. It is in a little bit of disrepair. But this is why it's. Um, this one is going, um, it has um connections to Penrose and Tutt. Um, it was one of the only homes at built at this time that is that size. Typically, they're much smaller. Idea with this was to um kind of attract an upper class. So it's a very interesting home for Purple Creek. Um, some concerns about siding. Um, some disrepair on there. Um, he did, uh, the applicant did say that um the estimate included the repairs of. Of these issues. Um, so they have, uh, the historic preservation commission has um suggested an award of nine thousand four hundred and fifty. Again, with the ten percent match. Any questions here? Um, two ten North Third Street, Ellen David Moore. Um, they have requested funds for um the replacement of windows. Um, again, this is a very interesting house for Purple Creek. Uh, again, of a rather large size, um the Mackens um have history here. Um, and because of that, um, the HP commission decided not to award funds. Um, because they did have concerns over the material choice of the windows. Um, they were vinyl windows was the suggested material. Preservation and did suggest we define that request. Um. We did say, we did go back to the applicant, because there were funds left over and we said, you know, if you want to present again in other material, we might be able to. Um, they defined to. We're suggesting no award. And, oh, this is, yes, um, two thirteen North First Street, um, the Phillips. Um, again, these are very interesting homes for Purple Creek. Um, you can see they're all in a row. Um, very few homes, um. At that time were actually masonry and these are masonry homes and built in the rose style, um. So very close together. Again, it was thought, it was thought to be a better alternative after the fires come to wood. And then as well as providing a cheaper but nicer living alternative for some of the lowering families, minors, um, that type of thing. Um, so he's requesting repairs for his roof. Um, all four of the roofs were damaged in the hailstorm. Um, there was a difference between what insurance paid out and what covered all the four roofs. Um, so he's requesting that difference at six thousand seven hundred and forty seven ninety. Um, we had, or HP has, sorry, suggested the award of um six thousand seventy three twenty. Um, again, with that ten percent match. Any questions on this one?
Well, that replaces all the roofs.
Yes, so basically that difference is the insurance, the name is all under, it's like if the four houses combined, so the payout was the four houses combined. The deficit was the six thousand for all of the roofs. So all of the roofs will be repaired, or I mean, it's six thousand price tag.
Is it same owner with all four?
Yes.
One of them to let him know who is planning to be here, but he has grandkids at home, so.
Awesome. Um, okay, three twenty three East Carr, um, Adela and Jack Mayberry. Some may requesting funds for the um repair of siding and paint. You'll probably recognize this because they requested it last year as well. Um, that work was not able to be carried out, I believe, because of the insurance claim. Um, they have requested it again. Um, they requested five thousand dollars, um, and after looking at the bids, it was a little bit less. So the suggested award there is four thousand three hundred and twenty with a ten percent. And there is a picture of. And last, um, seven oh nine Lloyd Avenue, um, Christine Deles. Um, she's got a little bit of a different project. Um, her goal here is actually to restore this house. And you'll notice it doesn't look very historic. Um, so I have a, oh, one picture on this next one, um, that one as well. This house on the right. Is actually in the um Purple Creek book, like, uh. As an example of what would have been, again, a lower income home. So this home would have been more popular in Purple Creek than even like the Victorian homes that we, you know. Really think of as Purple Creek in the texture. This would have been more common. Um, even in this home, in the historic picture, um. It's of historic quality. It has asphalt shingles on it. That's essentially what happened with Christine's home as well. It has um, uh. Vinyl siding on it. The goal was to put it back to the historic ship lap. So you, or sorry, wood lap. It would have been painted or um whitewashed wood lap. But there was some issues with the material choice in the bids. We wanted to make sure that it was clear before we made an award. So she's working on getting an updated bid, um, to resubmit. So we're recommending no award at this time, um, but, uh. Potential review if she.
I was curious, I guess, before. Does it have to be a certain material siding for historic, sure, we start to correct or like even someone wanted. Want to, I didn't believe in a metal roof, can they actually have a metal roof if it's not really historic?
So. No, so that's, I'm also working on clarifying our HP grant rules and, um. In the old versions, we would allow something like that, like we can't really regulate if someone wants to put on a metal roof. But we also wouldn't discount them in the future for it. So we can't pay for a metal roof. Um, but, and this is what I just do, but we can't pay for anything that's not historically accurate. Um, but we can't. You know, we would still consider them in the future for a grant, just because they did something.
In other words, if they did decide to do a metal roof, we would be able to pay for that, but we wouldn't stop them from getting windows or whatever, helping them.
That's all I got.
Mildly off the topic, but I know that we were talking about changing the twenty five thousand lifetime.
Yeah.
Is there any more discussion on that? I haven't heard much about it lately.
Um, yes, internally, um, that's, I'm working my way through all of HP ordinances, um, all of cemetery ordinances. Um, and that does include the grant guidelines. Um, I, the most recent documentation. That I can find on it is actually twenty fourteen, which had very different rules than um what I know now. Um, twenty five K did come into place in the nineties, as far as I can tell. I can't find a resolution or an ordinance. But the nineties is the first time I see it in the rules and regulations. Um, so I think that we have very good grounds to say, this is a different time in the nineties, so think about that. Um, and I can't tell why it was put into place, um, you know, if there was any kind of like cost comparison at the time. So I think we would really be starting from scratch on if we want a lifetime max or what that lifetime max would be. Um, but the guidelines do need to be completely rewritten, which would include that twenty five.
So I'm sure that's on your mind, 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 this is stuff.
You mean like, um, five years?
How that came into play, um, you know, the Everest on Eaton. Uh, the Blue House sits over little jackpot spirits, that was under the storm power. Um, they all had their last job refurbishing from what it was, but, uh. Basically, the owners got almost ninety thousand dollars from the city. Um, that was. Felt by a lot of people to be extremely excessive because. All the ones, so. And then the moment coming to a hose, they were spread out. Um, so. If we wanted to make it more equitable for everyone in town, then if we cap it at twenty five. For the lifetime of the property, um, I always thought that was kind of stupid, just. You know, okay, so these people do what they can do, sell the property when they don't. A mayor comes in that they really, really want to fix this, but, oh, well, you know, they rebuild the foundation, redesigners. So I think it's something worth discussing, so that people that do, who want to. Do a forestation, but also at that time is when the match came in because. Early on, there was no match. It's just like, here's the money of.
Right, yeah. And that's kind of what I'm wondering, because I saw that documentation too. The matching is, is very different historically than what we have now. And I'm wondering if that's maybe a way to, you know, deter the ninety thousand all at once, but. You know, have some kind of stepping stone for if you request thirty thousand dollars a year, maybe you have to match half. Or whatever it is. And maybe that's a better way to regulate it so that it's not handouts, but it's. An investment and we're not just awarding one property a ton of money.
I think it's definitely a conversation visiting down the road, and I just appreciate those residents who were working towards maintaining the historical.
Absolutely.
So, um, that being said, are there any questions or discussion?
And you specifically said if you rethink the window material, then resubmit and we can probably help you, but otherwise. So.
Yes, so I think the thought process there is that, um. And that's part of what I think we'll look at when we review guidelines, um, is. That historic windows or windows that HP could or would pay for are too, thought to be too expensive. And that owners can't come up with that difference. Um, so the applicant felt that it was unreasonable to request windows that looked historic. Because it's just too expensive.
Any real discussion? Can I get a motion?
Motion, make a motion to approve resolution two zero two four dash one five, awarding grants from the historic preservation grant funds to the named residents.
One second, please. Yes, yes. Um, everyone, I do apologize. I do need to take a five minute recess, so we don't recess at this time. And everybody, thank you so much. Again, my apologies for that. Too much coffee, Ted. Oh, um, agenda item C, um, before I read this agenda item, I just want to clarify that it is modified from what has been posted on the agenda. So agenda item C is consider authorizing staff to negotiate a contract with Kimberly Horn to and then return to council with the contract. So thank you, um, Ken.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mary, for modifying the motion. Um, we had an applicant, which was our preferred choice, but upon further review, leave dollars, what was a virtual rent. There was additional fee for the plan. On, uh, excuse me, the development code modification. And another hundred thousand dollars, which put them outside of our budget range. So it was a oversight from this communication upfront. Upon further review, we couldn't move forward with that within our budget. So in my home, we reviewed their contract and it does meet our budget concerns. It was our number two choice to move forward with. And so we're asking permission to negotiate that contract, move forward with the economic development and tourism strategy and the uh, excuse me, strategic comprehensive plan. Any questions I could address this time?
Actually, it was staff's work that actually caught that. We we were reading the, um, the program who's on the agenda, we were reading the RFP that had met our qualifications, but after staff talked to them, uh, it was not. They had completely left out part of what we put in the RFP. So when we asked, well, what's that cost? It's a hundred grand more. So it didn't meet our RFP requirements. So luckily it was caught by staff. So we went to number two. Uh, Kimberly Horn and they were a little bit over our budget. I have talked to Aaron about that and they agreed to modify. It was just a whole few thousand dollars over our budget. They agreed to modify. So they've modified their uh, costs to come in. We have the hundred thousand uh, from Dola and thought is here from Bo, but hey man, we appreciate you being he's our representative for our area and been very helpful to the city of Pippa, so we really appreciate you. We applied for a hundred thousand for the comprehensive plan. We received that from Dola. The match. It's a fifty fifty match. The match was put up by Full House Resorts. They put the hundred thousand dollars. What Dan Lee wanted was part of the comprehensive plan. He wanted us to specifically look at our economic development tourism strategy. So we separated two RFPs. One was for the comprehensive plan and one was for the economic development tourism strategy. Dola was good with that. Then we applied again, another section of Dola is the strong communities a project and we requested ninety nine thousand dollars with eleven thousand dollar match. And we received that. Also, we haven't received the contract yet. So what that ninety, a hundred and ten thousand is for is seventy five thousand will be for us to hire a consultant that will help guide the comprehensive plan and the economic development so that it doesn't put a strain on staff to oversee and watch and kind of guide the process, uh, setting up the meetings with the public and doing all of that. Staff will help, but I didn't want to put the whole load on staff to do their daily work and also run this. It's it's a long term project. It's about a year to get through the comprehensive plan. So in the thirty five thousand, we have a development code. And right now the old comprehensive plan of two thousand nine doesn't work with our development code that we have. So we have a comprehensive plan that says this is what you're supposed to do. Then we have codes that don't don't match that comprehensive plan. So the thirty five thousand will then be used, and again, from Dola to look at the end. And once that we kind of get to a draft comprehensive plan that we're all kind of good with. Then we'll look at our development codes and then match the development codes, make recommendations on changes to the development code. So it matches both the economic development tourism strategy and the comprehensive plan. So you will have, so out of that what three hundred and ten thousand dollars, our match was eleven thousand. Thank you again. And the full house, Ben Lee stepped into the place. It's going to be a good plan going forward. Sorry, Kim.
To be the heir for this money comes from how they spend, so. I
Reiterate what Frank just said, that our last comp plan was two thousand nine, which is fifteen years ago. So this is definitely a priority for council to address and also want to mention that we discussed it months ago. I want to very heavily market the opportunity for the community to be involved in this process. And so please know that there will be plenty of awareness for community to come in and give their voice, because this is really the guiding document for the future of the town. So.
So the process, this is there is process is the community being available to be road sessions or is it not?
No.
No.
During the hard process.
No, it's it's to get community input upfront to develop the plan. And they're going to prioritize the economic development tourism first. So it's probably a four to six month. So, uh, Kelly Horn will prioritize that first. So we'll be talking about that. And having meetings and they'll also be able to put their input in over the internet. There'll be a website set up that will be for the comprehensive plan and the EDTC plan. And people will be able to go online. Kelly Horn will set up that website and they'll be able to go on and put their input. If they can't come in the evening to a meeting or during the day, they could still have their input on the plans as we go through the process.
I'm just excited to be.
Community informed on this, it will do a better job.
But that's part of of what we do also is to get information out. They were found because of some of the connections we've tried to make with the community. The best way to communicate is putting notices in the post office box. Because that where everybody gets it, whether you're a leasing or you're owner or whatever, we put in the news board, I'm sorry.
Everybody has Facebook out there.
So stick it in their post office box and cost us a third meeting, but everybody gets it. Anyway, thank you.
And fortunately, we can afford our number two choice. We can, and thank you for catching that hundred thousand dollar difference. That being said, any other discussion or questions? All right, can I get a motion, please?
I will head and make it. I would motionally authorize staff to negotiate a contract with Kimberly Horn. Care to vote that between council and resident.
Vote, please.
Yes. Yes.
Senator.
Yes.
For the agenda item D. Consider acting as lead applicant for an energy impact system grant assistance grant for the community of the area. Ted Borden.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Ted Borden was the executive director for Community and Caring Foundation, also here with Mary Beals and Adam Waddle, and Idris Ordner. And Todd Lee was joining us from Dora. Thank you so much for making the drive down today, Todd. Um, I just wanted to, uh, say a big thank you to Frank and Annie and Todd. When you got word from the county on, uh, on Friday that they would not be able to be the lead applicant. Uh, you guys, uh, jumped right on it, uh, and were able to, uh, allow us to to present this evening, uh, and amend the agenda. So thank you guys so much. So the last time I came to, uh, talk with you and regards to the childcare project. We had requested, uh, the city to be a lead applicant on a CBG grant, a new development block grant that was January seventeenth, I believe. And at that time, uh, we had, uh, gotten information that the county and with the energy impact grant would be available in the July and August cycle. And so we withdrew that request from the city. Uh, you guys are gracious enough to give the presentation and and, uh, consider that. Um, but in lieu of that information, we withdrew that request. We're here to nod it because of the county could not act as our, uh, lead applicant and sponsoring entity uh, for the city to consider, uh, being our, uh, the lead applicant for the energy impact funds grant from Dora. Uh, the amount would be for a million dollars. Um, and so we're here to discuss that. I didn't want to go back and provide much his, much more history, uh, because I think we went over all of that in January, but if there's anything I need to clarify, um, that was, I'd be glad to, just a couple of points that did happen since January. Um, that I will kind of reiterate to you. We had our site, uh, survey by Crown Point. Uh, and so we did that because our next move was to island architecture, uh, T D G design, uh, who are working on schematics for the project. And so in your packet, you have the revised, uh, three different models for, uh, the design of the project. The outside design is the same, but there's three other, uh, potential designs for the interior. Uh, and that's in two phases, phase one, phase two. Um, and so if you have any questions in regards to that, I'd be glad to answer that. Um, also, um, that's the, I had a conversation with Steve DiCarmello in regards to the infrastructure. Uh, so, uh, Steve came out and and looked at, uh, the water sewer. There was not a lot in the way of recommendations for upgrades. It it's, uh, pretty much intact, which was a great relief to us because we know infrastructure can be such a huge cost. So that was great. Um, we did sign the contract with TDG Architecture, uh, to begin the schematic designs. We had our kickoff meeting uh, last month in regards to, uh, getting those designs in the process. And there's been a lot of discussion with them. Um, and then, um, Patty has been very diligently writing, uh, the narratives for the grant. A logic, a lot of, uh, budgetary considerations that are involved in that. We also did a presentation to the casino owners association. Uh, I think in April, uh, and they came back and said, you know, it'd be great if we had a pro forma that we could look at in regards to, uh, what a operations, uh, cost is going to be for the facility. So Patty's and and our, uh, staff that are putting together that pro forma and those numbers. Uh, so, uh, we have a much better idea about what the cost is going to be to operate at least phase one of that, uh, project, which would be for about forty eight kids, three classrooms. And so that's, uh, kind of what we're, uh, the premise that we're operating. So, uh, again, the request to the city is to consider acting as lead applicant uh, for, uh, the energy impact, uh, grant funds of a million dollars. Uh, we already, Community of Caring has already secured the match requirement. And that was through the CDEC grant for eight hundred thousand with a two hundred and sixty six thousand dollar map for that project. So there wouldn't be, uh, so we've already met met the match requirements uh, for the energy impact, uh, grant. Again, the reason, uh, for the immediacy of this is because the grant is due on, uh, July thirty first of August. So that's the reason that we're just let me think I can clarify.
So the million dollars, is that, would that cover the construction of the building? Ready to move in? Ready to build?
No, but but we get a lot closer. So, uh, we want to tell somebody here, one of the projects will be about two point four million. Uh, total cost of the project is three point four, uh, million. Uh, then we secured the eight hundred thousand of the two sixty six, uh, match, maybe of caring. The county actually put up a portion of that match with fifty thousand. Um, and so the other million will get us a lot closer. Uh, we will be launching a capital campaign to continue with private donations. We have several, I think I listed a lot of the, uh, foundational grants. We will be applying for several of the foundational grants have supported us in the past, um, generally for the renovation of, uh, Madame June's AMC West, which we probably paid off at the end of twenty twenty two. We could not have done that project without the sponsorship of the city. And so thank you so much, uh, for that. Uh, but that project went off great, um, so much support from the community. So we'll be going back to the community, back with some of those same foundations as we move forward with the childcare project. Um, and we've gotten some very firm commitments from several of the foundations already uh, in terms of of continuing to raise funds for the project. So, um, thank you for the question.
I was just thinking through what Todd was around and I, you know, is there, have you thought of options of snow building or do you look at keeping that footprint? Because it's got to be that big.
So again, phase one, we're we're being usable. So if we can only get to phase one and that's two point four by now, to be honest, it's probably two point six with with the gap in time, but, um, so we know that we could break it up and, uh, we could, we could become functional if we're just doing phase one. Obviously, we would love to see both phases completed by the end of twenty twenty six, which is our plan. That's, uh, CDEC's expiration of those funds would be at the end of twenty twenty six. Um, but we know that we can can do it for, uh, less than the full three point four million. But again, we want to make sure that this is a project that we could complete both phases by the end of twenty twenty six. Um, any reason we would like to mention, if you do, just some other.
We were.
Patty's design specialist.
Well, when we were considering the size of the building, we were, thank you, short. vertically challenged. Um, we were looking at the immediate needs, which, you know, you know, we don't have childcare at all. In Southern Taylor County, there is none. There's nothing for school age. And there's already head start and early head start for preschool and infancy toddlers. And you have to be at the poverty guideline. So if you're working, you don't qualify. So right now families are just trying to find anyone to watch their children. So we looked at immediate needs and phase one will meet our immediate needs. But we're looking at future needs. We're going to build a building. This not maxed it out, but very first time we move into it. So we were looking at trying to figure out how we could add additional space to add three more classrooms or six more classrooms, depending on our growth. Uh, but again, phase one, phase one at first was going to be just the administration ring and one ring on the side. But our construction consultant thought with the elevation of the land that we could actually do a two story with a walkout from the bottom and a walkout from the top. And really get more bang for our buck. If we did our phase one to be the administration piece plus two rings, but on top of each other. Um, the other idea is, you know, there's no place for kids. We see that on every survey that's done in our community. There's no place for families. There's no activity for children. We know that. So we're hoping that by thinking it large enough until we needed it for childcare, we could do an exploratory, no place for kids. The other options we have is those possibilities with drop-in childcare for our casino guests and visitors. They do it at our ski resort step drop-in. So there's no reason why we can't do drop-in. And then the other option that we deal with in our community is what to do with the weekends, weekends, evening care. That because we're twenty four seven gaming and twenty four seven mining, we need childcare more than just between the hours of eight to one. So yes, uh, I think the phases are a good idea. Because when you don't get that three billion or point three point four million, we can at least get something and get a bit. And that's kind of the reason why we went that direction. I don't know if they answered the question, but that's the thoughts.
Great ideas.
Thank you. I just have two questions. So the phase one, the operational capacity would be forty eight.
I, if we do, uh, childcare licensing, it's not fifty eight. But I do have childcare licensing is not always best practices. So if you can get by with thirty kids in a classroom for school age and get by with twenty five, that's always better. But when we look at that, we can look at state licensing. We can look at what we need to charge for tuition to make that cost, to meet our operational costs.
And then, um, operational hours.
Right now, we're, uh, budgeting or looking at ten hours per day for child. And of course, it's regular work hours. Problem with after after hours, evening or weekends is you might not have a full class. So you have to have two employees, even if you have two children. So it's it's not always cost effective. That's where we need community support. If we're going to be able to afford to offer weekends and evening care. Because we're still under the same regulations, but you don't have as many children, so you're not going to have as much tuition coming in. Sustainability for childcare is tuition. That's the business model. And then what we can do is through community efforts, private public partnerships. People can have to, people lower that tuition cost. Because we know childcare is not affordable. Quality childcare is not affordable. Parents have to suffer. For an infant, it's three hundred and seventy five dollars a week. And that's just the state average. And you can only have eight children in the classroom, but three teachers. So we have to reach out, reach question for sustainability, but where we will need to look at gaming impact, look at all of the resources. Bring it together and do bring all our resources to one project. Rather than this pet person doing something, this person doing something, this person doing something. And then you don't have anything sustainable. So that's kind of a, like, business model. I guess it was a business model.
So Todd, you said you've done the program or you're working with? We'd like to see that too. Yeah, the only thing I think you need to explain to the council on the million dollar lead is what does that put on the city? What has to happen? Like, what does Dora require that has to happen? So.
I just have.
Council, thanks for having me. I'll be a regional manager for Dola. Um, so a little bit about this program, you guys are pretty familiar with Energy Impact Assistance Fund. Uh, Frank talked about some of the big rung dollars you have. With million dollars, um, let me stop that. These are only dollars that are for city towns and special districts. So that's why we're asking, uh, the, or I should say Community and Caring is asking, you know, to serve as a lead applicant. Million dollars is, um, a, it requires fifty, uh, fifty, uh, for some match. Um, so if the project, uh, it's an example, it's two million dollars, and so Ted alluded to, this first phase may be two point four. Um, we can give up to a million dollars towards a project, a match requirement. Um, would be at least a million dollars. So it's a one for one match. In this case, that that seems to hold true. Um, a little different with, um, the, uh, early childhood education program, though, those projects specifically. This is obviously a governor's initiative, but it's really a priority for him around addressing our early childhood education and deficiencies around the state. Um, this program actually only requires a twenty five percent match. Um, so at a million dollars, it can have to come up to two hundred and fifty thousand.
Um, so at a million dollars, it'd have to come up to two hundred and fifty thousand. As you heard, they already got a, a grant of over eight hundred thousand. Um, so we had met that requirement. So any financial contribution or commitment on behalf of the city, um, is already been handled, uh, to be community caring. Um, this is though would be a contract between the city and, um, the state of Colorado. So it would be tied with, uh, Community and Caring to be with, uh, the city. Um, some specifics, and we've gone through contracts before. This isn't anything new. Uh, it does speak to a ten-year provision around use of the property being used for, uh, early childhood education. In the event that there was a timeframe that's less than ten years, there's a part of share that would be, have to come back in terms of the grant. Um, so if it was five years, early child, early, early childhood education, we'd be requesting five hundred thousand dollars back. So that is one of the others on the public provision that, um, I think what we were, what we talked about briefly is more of a management agreement between the city and, uh, Community and Caring to actually manage uh, the programs, operations, uh, we see the building, the condition, all the maintenance would be attributed to them uh, for that ten-year period of time. And then at that, uh, time period, once that, uh, that time period elapsed, the contracts, uh, kind of exceeded its useful life, uh, with that provision going away. But, uh, right now, we're really just talking about you serving as a lead applicant. Uh, this was something that the, the county had expressed interest in initially. Uh, I think they're going to be applying for a grant. And, um, I just think competitive in the standpoint, each jurisdiction can really bring forward only one grant. And there's just too much competition around the state. But, uh, love this project. I'll be honest, I really liked the idea of addressing early, to early childhood education efficiencies, specifically in this area. And, um, I've been, uh, to talk to the Ted and, and these folks for quite some time. And I, I think it's, it's worth consideration on your part, but I'm happy to answer the question.
I guess just a clarification, what exactly is the city's responsibility as the lead applicant?
Um, only the third, um, you were ensuring that this would, this project would come to fruition. So the project would be completed. Um, if there's, uh, the, you know, Community and Caring would come back and say two point four million for phase one. Um, so we could give up two, two million, or up to a million dollars towards a project. Uh, you would have, there would be a contract that basically states the, the requirements of during your early, uh, early childhood education would remain intact. And I would, I would handle that is I would, um, I would work with, obviously Frank and, and, uh, the city staff to develop a management agreement between the city and Community and Caring, saying these are the provisions that the services are going to provide. Um, this isn't necessarily unique. We, um, in this specific project, we've worked with other jurisdictions to serve as lead applicants, but you're not running the program. They're doing it on behalf of some of us. So in this case, we can, um, by the right, um, nonprofit, I would be supportive.
I'll just ask, those other projects that were, that you're talking about and just referenced, were they also childcare?
Yes.
Agree with you as well. And what jurisdictions were those?
Um, we were, um, there was, I believe there was one in Old Oak, Gray. Um, I, I, I actually I'll tell you the different agreements that have been had. Um, but, you know, we deal with this. I mean, in many cases, where we look at jurisdictions who are providing services, building a public facility, et cetera. In this case, it's a little unique because it's a mission of the, the Energy Impact Assistance Fund, um, has been set up. So twenty-five percent match versus the normal fifty percent match. Um, but it's really because of, uh, where the focus of this, this government, this administration is placed on early childhood education and trying to advance that throughout the scene.
Was there a requirement that the city have the property that's being built on?
Um, so currently what we would probably end up doing was doing a deed, uh, the proper deed to the city. The running agreement would speak to the service and provider. And then at the end of the ten years, if you revert, would revert back to the, uh, Community and Caring. That's how I would see this working. Um, it meets the spirit and the intent of the actual grant program itself. Um, that limits any exposure from an operational capital or individual leave standpoint. Well, we must, uh, some would have the Community and Caring, they could do their, any of the deal. We would be responsible.
Well, you're just responsible for the five, the million dollars for the just development. I think the city holds the money until we get to plan and see what everything's going to happen and before you don't, we're not just going to pass the money through till we see actually what they're going to do. I mean, there's some, you know, we don't have the address in the management agreement.
That's very important, as Ted points out. We, the city wants nothing to do with the operation.
Insurance, building maintenance, everything's got to be in the master agreement. So it's Community of Caring that's got to be taken care of.
So, so just timing zones, just so, um, the grant closes, um, thirty-first of July. Um, at that point in time, we do reviews that last about a month and a half. Um, presentations actually for this grant would be, um, I believe it's like the end of October. With decisions taking place by November first. Well, my, my general intent now I'd strategize about this. If you are willing to bring forward, be the lead applicant, we bring it forward. We work on the management agreements that ought to all be in place prior to, uh, presentation to the advisory committee. Um, there's a, a governor, a deputy advisory committee that, um, you would be, uh, doing a presentation or Ted would, uh, behalf of, of this program. Um, but all those intricate details can be worked out in the event that something, um, let's just, let's just be pessimist and say, the reasons which you're in a challenge would maybe have with the city. You could pull that grant application after the fact prior to the presentation. So I, I, I don't want to, you know, you know, be naked about it, but I would say there are, there's a time period for us to work this out. I don't think it's unprecedented in terms of what we've seen with other grants or other, uh, projects that have come through. It's just in the, in the context of this specific one, um, I have seen where we can limit any exposure from the city. And I think, uh, from the, the council's standpoint, uh, we can make that work, uh, to the, uh, presentation.
So the real time approach is just getting the grant. I totally support. Community and Caring has taken it. When I got here, the council gave me three things, you remember? One of them was childcare. So they've taken it on, totally support what they're doing. I think they've kind of nailed it. I think we need to be involved in it, which I think we should.
Previously, Community and Caring has proved that they can get stepped on with the purchase of um, juries and the payback of the debt loan. Um, you know, on the floor, we're agreeing because we're a bit early on fulfilling that commitment. So, you know, this is something that they want, we want.
I may look at shows, I, I just hope that they could have a staff, staffing. Yeah, I think that, I feel like the main concern is staffing. Yeah, I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that. I don't, it would be magic. Well, that's, um, absolutely. But I can certainly feel a balance concern that.
Safety is huge. I did that. I was with the Office of Head Start, I did the programs. But we have put into the pro forma or any other thing, but there is a really nice pay scale for staff. And when you run into your problem with staffing is the childcare center is trying to cover rent. You took all those expenses that we may not have to cover because this is a public building, we use public funds, we've got created private, private, public partnerships. Then we can put the money into staffing, which makes it more competitive, which makes it easier to get staffed. Plus, we're going to be working with the C T E building, uh, project at the school district. And we're going to bring our own staff, which I've done before with, with Head Start. Is that you start people in as assistants, as that third person, and you help them get the qualifications that you need. They're trained. We even put kids through college on scholarships to promote early childhood education. Plus, the Office of Head Start is putting in some initiatives. We don't know what they are yet, but we send them all over emails to help with supporting staffing and getting staff with the qualifications that they need. So yes, staffing was an issue. Staffing was an issue everywhere. But if we're, if we're holding back because we're worried that we won't have staff, twenty years from now, we're going to be sitting right here having the same conversation and still have no childcare in our community. And you are not going to have young families living here if there's no place to put their babies. We're not going to, I wouldn't, I wouldn't live here at all. So that's my thought.
Sounds like any concerns the city might have as far as being a lead applicant can be addressed in the management.
Todd, can you sing those, uh, what you have or what you have?
Yeah, I will sing some examples that we can kind of walk through it.
Uh, share them with council so they can kind of see.
I'll, I'll definitely get that to you.
Yeah, thank you.
I just appreciate all the guy, work you have done. And almost, and it, it is necessary. I mean, we all know that. And so, um, that being said, is there any further questions or discussion? All right, can I get a motion, please?
Well, what should we do?
So the goal should be, um, to authorize acting as lead, authorize the city acting as lead applicant for an energy impact assistance grant for the community of caring.
Yes.
Secretary Neri?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Um, we are at the end of the meeting. Thank you all so much for being here. Seriously, we appreciate you. And with that, this is me, Ms. Grant.